One Nation, Under God, Individual with Liberty and Justice for All.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protam Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? I think we may have an additional item to add to this. Commissioner Bonzal?
I move that we approve the agenda as written. I apologize, what was the additional item?
It is this Michigan Township Tax Tribunal Letter and Resolution.
Yes. And I also approve, or I also motion that we add the Market Township Tax Tribunal Letter and Resolution as an item under New Business.
Okay, so that would be New Business Item Number Eight, is that correct? And then we would move closed session to Number Nine. Do we make an agreement on at least the proposal, Commissioner Bonzal, how that will roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I'll second.
Anything to add, Commissioner Bonzal?
Nope.
Commissioner Frazier, anything?
It's war with the business.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. I have a few announcements, some construction updates. We're kind of nearing the end of our construction season here in Marquette. Phase one of the Lake Shore Boulevard project will be completed within the next two weeks. The Marquette Drive project is ongoing. Majority of street improvements and sewer line replacements for the season have been completed. We were able to add three more in Shyrus Hills using contingency funds and savings from prior projects, so a portion of each of the following roads in Shyrus Hills, West Nicolay Boulevard, Radisson Drive, and Nicolay Boulevard. And then the cleaning and televising of sewer and stormwater lines will begin soon and should be completed by the end of October. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Do we have any public comment either written or on the phone this evening? Perfect. We've got one written comment. City Clerk, whenever you're ready, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The written comment was received by email from Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, and it reads, "Madam Mayor, City Manager, and City Clerk, Item One: In reviewing the agenda for the City Commission meeting on Monday, September 28th, 2020, I noticed that the slides for the two presentations were not included in the agenda packet. In the future, could the slides for presentations be included in the agenda packet? This would facilitate community involvement with the speaker, as more relevant public comment would be obtained about upcoming presentations if the city residents could see the slides in advance. Item Two: Will trick-or-treating be allowed within the city limits this upcoming Halloween? Item Three: I was out at Clark Lambros Park Sunday afternoon, and while leaving, I noticed that someone had put up a campaign sign advocating not wearing masks. This confused me, as my understanding was that no posting of signs was allowed in city parks. By the time I finished my drive around the island, the sign was no longer there. Please clarify the city policy on the posting of political signs or issue signs in public parks. Sincerely, Margaret Brum." And there is no one, no one looking to speak on the Zoom call right now.
Okay. With no additional comment, public comment is now closed. Moving on to presentations, we have two this evening. First, we have the presentation by Brad Austin, Director of Operations for the Market County Solid Waste Management Authority. Brad is joining us to provide an update on recycling. Thank you to Brad for joining us this evening, and go ahead whenever you're ready. It might take a moment for the technology to load. If you can see the screen, I see Recycle 906. I'm guessing that's Brad, maybe?
Good evening.
Oh, you're on the phone. Okay. Got it. Hi, Brad. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you all for having me. Hope everyone is staying safe and healthy. Tonight, just wanted to give everyone an update on a few items regarding construction, and also receive a couple of questions from the commission, and then I'll also answer this evening. Construction of the new facility is moving along. The equipment is being installed both for the single-stream material that'll be collected and the glass processing. Equipment is also in the process of being installed. One of the things that we've discussed here, or we've gotten some traffic here at the authority, was regarding projected load acceptance for materials. As you know, there's been an elimination of acceptance of material at the authority in order to complete construction, so I wanted to let the City Commission know that effective the first of October, we will accept residential glass. So if residents choose to bring it up to the authority, we will accept it. We do need material for the wet and dry test runs for the equipment, so we'll accept that from individual residents. Tentatively, on the 15th of October, 10:15, we hope to be accepting single-stream loads curbside, along with loads of glass from municipalities, i.e. drop-off or curbside collection. We understand, in our communications with the haulers and the municipalities, that you know, some of the glass options, whether it be curb or drop-off, are a work in progress. But I want to advise everyone that tentatively around the 15th, we hope to be accepting loads. You know, with COVID-19 and the number of staff we have on site, of course, you know, there's, everything really is tentative. We hope everything goes as planned, but we continue to be in contact with the haulers on a weekly basis, providing them updates. And in turn, you know, they're able to, you know, service those municipalities and get them to the authority on our own that date. On the education outreach, I just wanted to let everybody know that we've got two great resources for the residents of the county. Recycle906.com was launched about a month ago, and we also have the Market County Recycling Guide, which was direct mailed a week or two ago. We've had about 11,000 hits on the website and a lot of return visitors, so traffic on that website is really good. We've got a lot of great feedback and questions from residents. We ask the residents to follow the guidelines provided on Recycle906.com, along with the recycling outreach guide that was direct mailed.
You still there, Brad?
Yeah, I'm still there, and I guess at this point, I just wanted to provide, you know, on our end, just an update from the authority. I know there's some questions, and I guess I wasn't sure how you guys wanted to handle that. I see there's a few here that are geared toward the city regarding carts and regarding glass, and then a couple regarding, you know, assurances on materials being recyclable, plastic and fiber. So I'm not sure which direction or which question will be answered first, but I'm prepared for questions three and four.
I sent some questions.
Oh, okay. It sounds like Mayor Protam Hill sent you questions, so we are not looking at these questions with you, Brad. I think that's why we're having a little bit of quiet now. We're going, what are these questions? If you want to go ahead and answer some of those questions, that'd be great. Just kind of broadly talk about those topics, and then we'll go on to additional questions from other commissioners.
Sure. The first question was, what assurances can the MCSWMA provide that the plastics are being recycled, and if they are not, what is the drive, what is driving that decision? I would say most importantly here, to ensure that we are recycling, we are marketing commodities, that we ensure that we're following the guidelines to ensure that acceptable items are being placed curbside. I mean, that's really the key, and it's what we've invested time and effort into the outreach. In order for commodity markets to be viable, we need to be sending the market something that they can reuse. So, I mean, some of the things that have come up with this, you know, in the last, you know, few months and questions that we had, is just reminders to everybody that a recycling symbol and a number does not necessarily mean that that item is recyclable in our program. I think that's a focus point moving forward, is try to stay away from Google searching what is or what isn't recyclable, and really focus in on what the single-stream flyer talks about as acceptable and what's identified on Recycle906.com. The two resources are the same, they were put together the same in the same team. That's really the focus. So, as far as assurances, you're dealing with a commodity, so we're going to be splitting multiple plastic grades, and we're going to be marketing them to five or six different outlets in the Midwest. At this time, we only have, you know, the ability to potentially, you know, commodity market agreement these commodities for about a year. So, we do have outlets, and we're diversifying that portfolio to ensure that we are able to move it to market. And really, the only thing that drives the decision to maybe hold materials, potentially look at removing them from being able to move to market, if the market drives up and we're unable to. Our intention is to process collective recyclables, number ones, number twos, three through sevens, and we have viable markets for those commodities at this time, and we continue to, you know, negotiate those agreements. And really, in some cases, because of the market conditions, you're really working on a week-to-week or a month-to-month basis, as far as where we can move them and how effectively we can move them at the highest value. The fourth question was, who is the purchaser of fiber products, and how will that be assured to continue to be recycled? Fiber is multiple markets. Again, Yuki Paper and Mattel Stick is a market that we intend to move papers to. Sunoco in Wisconsin, Pratt Industries just built a large facility in Ohio. So, we've got three or four larger paper buyers that we're working with as far as our material. We've been, you know, talking with these buyers for the past six months. So, you know, again, I see language in the questions regarding assurances. How can we be assured, again, first and foremost, place in the bin what is acceptable in the program, and we will do everything that we can to make sure we get it to commodity market. But understand, I think it's important to recognize that, it is a commodity. So, hopefully that answers, and certainly I'd be glad to take any other questions. But those were the two that were listed in the questions that had come.
I appreciate those updates, and I definitely appreciate you coming tonight. You know, I think it might help if we've got some really, kind of, any more broad, basic questions for the commission, and if we have specifics, we can go into those. But anyone have any broad kind of questions? Commissioner Frazier?
Hey, Brad. Commissioner Frazier, do you see the future? You know, obviously, you're just getting started with the glass again. Do you see in the future, like, just adding it to the recycle bin eventually, you know, after you're going to get the system down and stuff like that, just to help people and help the cities and communities, just make it easier to put it in the recycle bin? And the other question was, you know, the big styrofoam was a very big object in the city. What about, like, the styrofoam containers? From like, you go to the restaurant, get something to eat, and they put your food back in a little styrofoam container, just basically it's paper per styrofoam. I know, big styrofoam is not recyclable, but what about those little recyclable containers? You know, just questions like that we get asked a lot and stuff like that. If you can answer those, it'd be great.
Sure. Yeah, regarding glass and having it be sourced separate, I think, you know, this was one of the points that, you know, very early on, in order for us to create a product, and if we go back to even to 2018, when it was removed, and as we started to look at what the options were moving forward, in order for us to create a product that can be repurposed, whether it be in the concrete asphalt industry, or utilize it for sand or for sandblasting, or potentially replacement in Portland cement, replacing a fly ash in Portland cement, we really need a clean feedstock. Not much has changed as far as the glass market goes. In order for us to take materials and move them to Milwaukee, it's at a very high cost. And as far as materials going back into the bin, remember, that glass is, you know, those characteristics are still the same. It gets crushed in the back of a truck, it pushes into the fibers, it pushes into the plastics, and those commodities then become less valuable. So, here was a chance through some, you know, what we understand is going to be some outreach and, you know, contained education, but if we keep that material separate, there's something viable that we can use it for, and we can come back and show that story and say, hey, you know, if we separate it, here's what we can make. Perhaps we use it in a landscaping project in one of our municipalities. But unless it's separated, we don't have those opportunities. Regarding the styrofoam, and I didn't catch all the questions, but the single-use items are something that, you know, are difficult to deal with, and I think you mentioned, you know, the options are going to paper. I think that's the key, you know, moving forward. However, you still have the food contamination issue, whether it's styrofoam or paper. So, in a paper scenario, you would have a material that you could potentially put into an organics bin and turn it into topsoil, but you're not going to get away from or have the ability to recycle a styrofoam that has organics or food waste emanating from it.
Got you, Brad. I understand that. Now, it makes perfect sense, you know, basically, the styrofoam you get from the, you know, you go to the restaurant, get something to eat, and they put your food in a container. If you get recyclable, but it could be recyclable, but the paper, but then, like you said, it's contaminated, and I agree with that. And I think it's good that you're looking at the options given to, you know, aggregate people for blocked up or concrete. I saw with the power plant at the island closing down, that was a big fly ash supplier, so that's something good to look at. And I hope you, I didn't think about that, I forgot that you were just doing crushing the glass separately. It's a good idea. So hopefully, eventually, we'll get something figured out, and maybe we'll have to do like a separate container or something eventually, but we'll figure it out. I think it's good, just at least a start. And I know, like, the county and a lot of construction people are looking forward to try it out, so I think it's a good idea. Thanks a lot, Brad.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brad, thanks for the information. I think my biggest takeaway, I've got one simple question. If people have an extra bin because we're going single-stream now, what can they do with that? Are they going to be able to bring it back? That's the only question that I've gotten about this, and get credit for it. What's the return policy there?
And that's actually not a landfill question, that would be our own system. I'm wondering if city staff might be able to answer that?
Okay.
Oh, there you go, Scott. Yes, Scott, if you could help us out with that. I actually think I filled mine out correctly, but we're about to find out, to do this very thing.
Good evening. Yeah, I was just kind of waiting for Brad to finish up his end of things.
But we all want to know how it impacts us. Thanks, Scott, and thank you, Brad.
All the city residents in their mail, their utility bill, get a stuffer that looks like this, and I think we probably finished up about a week, maybe two weeks ago, with these coming out. So everybody should have one of those forms in their possession, and anytime you're wishing to make a change with what you have for carts, you simply fill out the form. These carts are really, in essence, just being rented. So, if you're not going to be using three carts and you only want two carts, you turn one back in. It has to be cleaned, so make sure you hose it out first, but you turn it back in, and then we just adjust your bill accordingly. And there's A through F for different cart packages, and there's actually a few people that have gone outside of that and done a hybrid for people that have a lot of recycling and stuff like that. You can add recycling carts and such, so.
Great.
As far as any change, that's the form you would fill out, and it's also located on our city website as well.
Thanks.
I don't think that we drop them off. They're picked up by the...
So, there's two different scenarios, and the first is, once a year, we actually drop them off and pick them up.
Yeah.
The order forms are due by this Friday to be part of that. So, those carts will come in, and we'll have them distributed, hoping just before Christmas, somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas this year. And then, any other time during the year, if you're downgrading or turning something in, you just wash it out and drop it off at the service center at 1100 Wright Street. And, yeah, that's pretty, pretty much it as far as that goes.
Do you have more? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thanks. That clears that up. And I guess the only thing, other thing I want to talk about with what Brad was bringing up is the drive-it-home. If you're going to recycle something, recycle what's properly meant to be recycled. Clean it, rinse it out, take the labels off. You're going to get the best bang for the buck for that kind of recycling. I know it's been a little bit of a learning curve in our household, and I'm just, I'm glad that you're kind of driving that home today, Brad, and that it was well documented in the literature that we got in the mail versus, and, you know, how this is going to proceed in the future. But it's not that hard to do, and I think that if we all work together, it's going to be a real successful program.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Question, I'm not sure, I think, Scott, to understand, so everybody does understand, we are not requiring people to recycle. That is still an option that people have, right?
That's still an option.
So, it's only a good thing to do, but it's not a requirement. I would presume that those items listed on the bottom of the page is not collectible curbside for recycle or other material would be going into the green bags as we always have.
On this flyer?
I think, yeah.
The one from the county?
Right.
Yeah. Those would be items that would just be put in your green bag. Now, there are...
There's some things that don't belong here.
Essentially, some of those, like the household hazardous waste, we have a special collection for that. We host that once a month during the few summer months we have.
But those items that would not be considered recyclable would go into green bags like we normally do?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I'm going to go back to Brad. And, you know, on the educational flyer that you sent to the homes, I'm really pleased that you talked about being wishcyclers, because I'm assuming there are a good number of our city residents that are wishcyclers. I think the most confusing one is what plastics are recyclable, and I'm wondering if, either on your website or in the future, you could do maybe some additional education about which plastics are allowed to be in the recycle. Because I think those people who are wishcyclers also want to do it right, and I hear a lot of questions about, well, is this one going to work, or is this one not going to work? And I hope it works, so I'll put it in there. So, just a suggestion, and a thank you for even bringing up the fact that several of us are wishcyclers.
Yeah. Our intention with Recycle906.com is to develop, and what you see in other communities, we're going to mirror that. Well, we're looking at an alphabetical list of products that, you know, you can click on and can tell you, we'll use icons, but really get into a little bit deeper into each individual item. Plastic is evolving. It's very difficult. We are overpackaged, as we all know, and, you know, they, these things are produced, and then the material recovery facility is expected to just deal with these items. So, there's definitely more information coming, a little bit more specific, and we feel right now by product name with a small icon would be something that would be handy for folks to look at on the website.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you so much to both Scott for providing a good explanation to us, just now of how the bins work, as well as to Brad for your explanations tonight. And I think that we all really appreciate the hard work that you both do and that your staff have been doing here at the city and at the MCSWMA to try and make this work. Both of my questions, I think, are more pertinent to the city and our operations. First, is it the city's plan or intention, as of right now, to provide curbside glass recycling pickup, or is that a determination that still has to be made by staff and/or the commission?
It's part of an ongoing discussion, I think, that we've been having on how best to take in the glass over the last several months here. One of the big things with glass is that it's, it's a little bit more difficult, I think, to handle. It's certainly harder on the equipment that collects it and things like that. So, I mean, we've, we've had a lot of discussion, not only with Brad, but with our hauler, and really, what we've, we've come down to is just a few different options for taking that in. The first option that we explored was adding a special collection for it, but when it really comes down to it, adding special collections is just going to drive up everybody's bill. And I don't think that's really in the general public's interest to do this in such a manner that we drive up the bill. So, having said that, they kind of came back and said, well, why not try a drop-off site? And if you recall, we did drop-off for general single-stream recycling before, and we also tried that with household organics. And what ended up happening, and it, you know, it's just like anything else, 1% can ruin it for the other 99% using a site like that, but essentially, both of those, those drop-offs, because they were unmanned sites, were essentially used as our rubbish drop-off site was used. And we had microwaves, TVs, all kinds of stuff showing up in there. And at which point, you know, once that load's considered contaminated to a point that they can't sort through it, then we're essentially not only landfilling it, but we're paying to landfill it on top of that. And so, I didn't, I didn't really want to do that, because the only way for us to actually do that and hopefully not have a lot of contamination was to man that drop-off site, which again, would add cost to it. So, really, what we were down to was looking at replacing one of the single-stream collection weeks with glass recycling. And the real question comes down to is just, you know, what's a reasonable frequency? You know, based on the volume, we kind of felt that one out of five weeks was a reasonable frequency. You know, what's easiest for the general public? Well, it might not be the easiest to remember every fifth week. So, one of the things that we also threw out there was just the first full week of the month, we would collect glass, and then the rest would all be in the single stream. But when it, when it comes right down to it, you know, certainly, that's, that's our recommendation, but the actual frequency at which you want to do it is kind of up to you guys.
Well, thank you, Scott. I really appreciate that, that in-depth explanation. And I think I, just based on what you shared, you know, I think I agree with your assessment completely that it makes more sense to do some kind of rotational curbside pickup than a drop-off site. I'm just curious, you know, do you have an idea, does city staff have an idea of when we may be prepared to offer a curbside glass recycling pickup in some form, or at least an estimate? Because I think one of, the MCSWMA and the city in general have done a great job of providing information about how recycling is going to work, but this is the one question that hasn't been answered, and with October 1st approaching, I would hate to see people start, like, putting out glass or something like that.
So, there were a couple of different factors. Originally, I had wanted to get it done to start out the new year, and that was based on two factors. One, there were a lot of changeovers with our hauler, not only personnel-wise, but, you know, the way they were doing things. And, you know, I know you've heard probably quite a bit about the separating the recycling trip from the garbage trip. They now do everything in two trips, and that, that created a lot of confusion, I think, for people. But they've got some personnel on board now that are making a lot of the corrections, and I think things have gone smoother. They're getting it done a lot closer to the ADM that they're, you know, charged with completing the task by. You know, the second factor that I looked at was, I wasn't sure that doing this when we were introducing carts for a lot of homeowners and changing over carts was necessarily the right time to do it. And that's, that's really how I came up with, you know, starting it in January. But, you know, that's not to say that, you know, if it was the desired direction that... But, you know, that's not to say that, you know, if it was the desired direction, that we couldn't move that up. Certainly, you know, we could look at trying to move that up to first week in December, or possibly even the first week in November. And I guess the third factor was, I mean, you heard Brad talk about bringing all that new equipment online. Yeah, their goal is to have it at these certain dates, but through my discussions, I mean, their single-stream sort was their main priority. Glass was going to be completed, that equipment install was going to be completed following the single-sort install. So in my mind, I just really wanted to make sure that they were up and running and everything was ready to go for us.
Well, thanks, Scott. I appreciate it, and appreciate all your work. I just hope that everybody in this room, like all my colleagues and, you know, city staff, that we're all taking what steps we need in the next few days to get that message that you just shared out to the public. Because I do think there is some confusion right now, but I think there's still time, so, but thank you.
Mayor Protem Hell?
Thank, yeah, thank you both very much. And the questions that I had came from the public to me. Because, yeah, there's a lot of people, as Commissioner Davis said, who want to do the right thing and are eager to do the right thing, and are awaiting direction. But then, yeah, also have these ideas in your head, and I really appreciate the advice to just go to recycle906.com and see what it says. And that will be particularly for plastic and fiber, cardboard and paper. And the question on the assurances part was, there's been a, Brad, I just want to, I heard that what you're telling us is, you know, we're trying to sell the material that we collect to a market that will take it when it's in certain conditions, when it's in prime condition, I should say. And the concern is that there's been articles nationally about how even in that case, not necessarily is the plastic being, in particular, being actually recycled, it still somehow ends up in the landfill. That's what I've been very directly asked by the public, is, you know, how do we know that this is actually going to be recycled, or is it going to end up in the landfill? And I, so I just, yeah, thank you.
Jen, if I could, real quick, and I think it's a great point, and it has merit, and if you look at things nationally, in some cases, there have been issues. I think as we come online, this facility comes online, as I've talked to commodity buyers, it's been a focus point to them also that if we're truly going to, you know, make this work and get buy-in from the residents of the county and/or residents from around the upper peninsula, we need to tell the story on the back end. So, for example, the life of a milk jug, if you will. Part of my focus moving forward is material procurement from, you know, multiple counties outside of Marquette. And also, as this material moves to market, go to those facilities and watch our material being processed. I mean, I think that's kind of the closing, the loop part of this, where if we're asking people to do this, follow the guidelines, bringing something back to the community and saying, this is what's happening with the material. And if something's not happening that we don't like, or that is not up to our standards and how we want to operate, then we look for alternative markets for that material. But nationally, there has been some things, and I have seen the article, and I've seen others. All I can tell you is a part of the mission is to go out and bring the story back and say, here's what's happening to this material, and provide that to the residents of the county.
Thank you, that's very clear. I just wanted to just bring that home one more time. Thank you. I know you guys are repeating yourselves a lot right now. And then my other question, if I may, is just to Scott. So when are we in the city of Marquette going to start single-stream? Has that decision been made? I guess I'm not entirely clear. I'm Wednesday night, so I haven't done anything yet. I'm still in September, but, yeah, when do we start?
We can actually move to single-stream at any time. You know, right now, our hauler is actually, they've gone back to Eagle, in Eagle River, Wisconsin, for their recyclables. Well, Brad's group was getting the equipment back online, and they do accept single-stream. So we can make that move right now, actually. And, you know, one of the things, and this is probably part of the learning curve, we're just trying to get everybody conditioned to this, and it's kind of come up a few different times tonight, but one of the big failures, or what I saw as a big failure, trying to communicate the message when we went the other direction from single-stream to dual-stream was you had all of the 22 constituent municipalities, the landfill authority, putting out their own message. You had different people or different municipalities advertising in our local paper, you know, exactly what their program looked like. And, you know, so-and-so clipped this out, well, this was for Paul Township, not City of Marquette. You know, it was things like that. Really, I'll sum it up with, if you remember the great pizza box debacle, and how much, you know, trouble that really caused with, you know, could we recycle pizza boxes or not? And we're really, we're trying to make a shift, and this has been recommended for years by Eagle, or MDEQ at the time, and all the different MRFs, which are material recovery facilities that are out there. You want a clear, consistent message, and the best way to accomplish that is for them to be putting out the message to everybody. And, you know, Brad referenced the recycle906 website, they've been on there, so a few of those hits are mine, Brad. But it is a good website, it's well-done, there's a lot of good information out there. Certainly, these flyers that were received in the mail, I think there's a lot of good information. But that's all coming from Brad and his group out there with recycle906, and I think it's I think it's a good message, and I think it's, in the end, it's going to work out the best if that's where the message continues to come from. Certainly, on the city side, you know, we're going to have a message about the carts and how that end of things is going to go. And we'll certainly be redirecting people to recycle906 and that, and trying to get that get them pointed in the right direction as to where to get that message, but we really, really want that message to come from Brad and recycle906.
I have a few questions, given that. So, it sounds great, and I really like the marketing campaign, and I think, Scott, you've done a really nice job, and Brad, too, and now we're at the point of, we're going to get started. So I heard you say we can start anytime, but I didn't hear a date. So do we have a date that we're looking to go online, or are we just relying on the recycle906 to, when they're ready?
We've relied on that already.
Okay, so Brad, what's the date? I said, so Brad, what's the date?
Okay, so, and Scott, just to leave this, I think that's, you know, just one of the pieces here. The city of Marquette is, their hauler, Waste Management, has a facility that they can go to. You already have single-stream commercial material moving to that facility. So they're simply going to place that curbside single-stream, and with the commercial, they're going to move it to that alternate facility. So the October 1st date that's on the flyer is solid for the city of Marquette, because you have an alternative option. Where things have gotten a little bit sideways is not all municipalities have that option. So some of them were going to Cady Sawyer on a temporary basis. Some asked their residents to hold material, but for the city of Marquette, if you go to single on the 1st, you guys are good to go, because you have a facility that can handle it until we come online, and then those loads will start to come to us. And as I said earlier, hopefully, on or around October 15th, so we can start collecting your data and really start taking a close look at your recycling rate, and putting those data packages together to present to Scott and say, okay, here's your solid waste, here's your recycling information. So you guys are good, you can go now, October 1.
And I guess, I just, you know, and our hauler is ready for that, and we're good to go? Because I guess the worst that can happen, right, is someone puts out one or the other, but it doesn't really matter, because it's still single-stream, so that material is still going to get recycled while they learn that habit.
That's the, really-
Right, and I think the haulers are on board also, and really, they're an important part to this, because they have interactions at the curb. They get calls from customers, and, you know, this transition will take a little bit, but, I mean, even when they went from single to dual, within a month, people understood. Now we've got, coupled with what the haulers will be communicating, we've got a flyer, direct mail, here's your date, here's what you can and can't do, and we have a website that you can also reference also. So I think this will be a smooth transition. We'll have a couple of wrinkles, but city of Marquette, October 1, you guys can go.
Great.
I was just going to say, that's the good thing about going this direction as opposed to the other direction, you've got a lot more play.
Nothing will get lost, at least, it's just, yeah. It'll just get more efficient with time. Well, I think that answers my questions. The follow-up question on the single-stream, my follow-up question on glass, we've been kind of talking about glass, and I heard maybe the start of the new year. I haven't really heard a date for when we're planning on that. I don't know if that's something that comes back for commission approval, or you guys just make it happen, but I'm just kind of looking for, you know, a more firm answer for next steps on that piece.
I think that would be whatever consensus you guys come up with. I mean, we can certainly move things up from that, like I said. I think my recommendation, like I said, is to go with the first week of the month. I think that's probably first full week of the month, that's easiest for people to remember. We can supplement that with a calendar that has those weeks blocked out, and put that on the website. I think we can make it fairly simple. You know, we could move that up if you feel that that's appropriate with the other thoughts that I had given you earlier on where we're at.
Commissioner Stonehouse, do you have something to add?
What I keep trying to catch up with here is when we are doing what. So we're going to do glass on the first weekend, week of the month, but we're not doing recycle on the first week of the month. We're just doing glass.
It'll be just glass, no single-stream.
Okay. And do we do normal household refuse at that point?
Your garbage will be the same every week?
Same time.
Yep.
So then we recycle on the following, on every other week in the month?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be your-
Just wanted to be clear.
That'll be your single-stream recycling on the other weeks.
Other weeks, good. Thank you.
I like that proposal, and I think I'm seeing some head nods and things, it looks appropriate, so. I mean, I think, you know, as soon as feasibly possible, but I think we understand that there are other things at play, too, so. I certainly would like to make sure that the single-stream can get off to a really nice start, so there's not an immediate need on the glass, but, you know, sooner the better, at least from my perspective. Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, thanks, Scott, for letting everybody know that. It's good to know that we can move to a single-stream, and I think give everybody a chance to see how, you know, going back to the old style, see if they have, if one bin's enough, if they go with two bins, you know. Like you said, like Paul asked, you know, can you return a bin? But I think it's good, October is a good way just to have my feeling out, see how it goes. And I agree that it goes up to the MRF anyway, and they do everything, so it's good. As far as the glass stuff, you know, I agree, first of the month, that's one option. Last week of the month is an option, you know, just thinking about it, because, oh, is this for, you know, what is first week, then the last week? That's just, you break it out, and as far as, I think I agree with you, as far as you don't want a drop-off site, because that's if Mike wants to hang out there and, you know, watch everything, but I remember Waste Management had that, and you had that, and it wasn't pretty, so. Like, you know, like Fred said, an actual drop-off, you know, I thought, pick up it like once a week or something. Yeah, maybe people want to get an extra bin just for the last, who knows, but we'll see how it goes, and, I know it's an option you think about, and maybe start the first year, you know, maybe late, but it's, well, maybe see how, you'll talk to landfill and see how Brad's doing, see how the machine works, and then kind of go from there, just to see, because I know their options right now are just sending it to the county and different ag people to recycle it, you know, into the road building. Won't be much road building this winter, except for a little bit of concrete here and there, but it's a good option for them to, you know, play it out, you know, maybe work with them, maybe try one or two trips, see how it goes, and then, you know, just kind of feel it out, and then hopefully by, you know, next year, by January, you'll figure it out what's going on, so. I have faith in you, Scott.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hell, last thing, and then I think we've got to wrap up this inadvertent work session we've had in recycling.
On the, Brad, on the glass, from the residences, I did hear from one person who told me she had two and a half years of glass in her garage. And so I'm sure, so would you prefer that people call before they bring in the glass to come over, or are there and when do you expect a cutoff date on that individual sending in glass, coming directly to you to drop off glass?
Jen, no phone call required.
Okay.
And if you're a Marquette County resident, you can deliver that material to our street chart. So we will scale resident in, and then we'll push them to the facility, and there is, I want to just make sure I heard you right. There is no deadline regarding the drop-off. That is always going to be in place as the municipalities work towards either drop-off or curbside. If those options aren't available, then the authority will always be a direct drop location for separated glass, if the resident wants to utilize that option.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think that we have had a sufficient update at this point. I appreciate Brad for joining us, and for Scott for chiming in as well. And we've got some exciting changes coming up. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to our second presentation of the evening, the Marquette-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority by Chair David Allen. And we're going-
Hello?
Hi, David, thank you for joining us. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
I'm going to attempt to share my screen.
Sounds great. You're a pro. Nice job. We can see your screen.
Okay, great. So, I'm going to see if it advances. Hold on. There, okay. Good. So what I want to do is, I want to do four things. One, I want to start off and just talk to you a little bit about what the theory is and the idea is behind the Brownfield program. Then I want to quickly run through a series of slides to number two, show you what the, how the program works. And then number three, show you some of the projects that have occurred here in Marquette. And then I want to finish up with number four, talking about some of the issues and challenges that we face as a city, as a commission, as a Brownfield authority. So first, let me just talk a little bit about the theory behind this. I think the way to think about Brownfield is, think of it as harnessing market forces to achieve
Certain public goods. And what those public goods are, are things like, one, first and foremost, causing properties which are unlikely to be redeveloped, because of certain kinds of problems that we're going to talk about, getting them catalyzed so that they move into a development mode, so that the property value goes up. So that's the first public good, is increased property taxes from places that would not otherwise be developed. But in addition to that, one of the important ideas is that there is this tendency, if you just let market forces go on their own, especially industrial forces, you tend to get rings of industrial development that then get abandoned, and then new green areas get developed, leaving the former industrial sites behind. And you get these concentric rings of new development, leaving behind abandoned places. And that was one of the original ideas behind Brownfield, was to incentivize developers, especially industrial developers, to go back to those sites, find ways to clean those up and make them back into a reasonable place to develop, to prevent that green space from being gobbled up and turned into brown space. In addition to that, there are a number of other things that happen. One is you can actually cause certain public infrastructure, public access, public goods like that to be included, which you wouldn't necessarily otherwise get. And you can piggyback on other things that you're trying to do, keeping it downtown revitalized and vibrant, instead of getting a lot of sprawl and things like that. So that's the idea behind this. I want to now very quickly run through some slides that show how the program actually works. And then, as I said, we'll go to some more slides after that about projects here in Marquette. in Marquette. So when you're thinking about how this program actually works, there's two specific things to think about. One is, there are only certain properties where you can do this. This is all under the Brownfield law that Michigan passed. There are certain kinds of properties that qualify to be eligible properties. You can only do this kind of work at those eligible properties. And there's only a subset of activities that you can do on those properties. I'm going to go into both of those very quickly here. So first of all, what are eligible properties? The classic one, the one that is sort of the original motivator behind the entire program is those places that have become contaminated, where hazardous substances, which are defined under these various environmental laws, have gotten into soil and groundwater above certain state criteria. So once that happens, that means there's all sorts of liability and problems associated with developing that makes them an eligible property. But in addition to that, even properties which aren't necessarily contaminated, but which have been declared a public nuisance, where utilities have been disconnected, that sort of thing, there's another kind of property that is eligible. In addition to that, a property can be functionally obsolete, whatever the original purpose was, it's no longer available, and this thing's been abandoned for whatever reason, that also can be an eligible property. And finally, there are certain historically designated sites that can be eligible under Brownfield. So all four of those are eligible properties, and no matter what causes it to be eligible, in order for it to actually be in the program, there has to be a Brownfield plan under that state law, and the Brownfield plan must be approved both by the MBRA, so the Board of Denial Law, the Authority of Denial Law, and by the City Commission. So both of those things have to happen under an actual plan before you can look forward. Now, I want to talk about, on those kinds of properties, what are the kinds of things that are eligible to be covered by these Brownfield mechanisms, which I'm also going to describe in a moment? And there are two big categories of those, environmental activities and non-environmental activities. Environmental activities are the ones that you normally think about for contaminated properties, where you have, you know, contamination problems, but there are additional ones that are the non-environmental, which I'll describe in a moment. When the environmental, there are baseline environmental activities, this is where you sort of figure out what has happened to contaminate the site. Phase one, you look at historical uses, figure out what might have gotten into the soil and groundwater based on those uses. If you find those kinds of historical processes, you then actually go up, phase two, sample the soil and groundwater to confirm that those substances are present. If they are confirmed to be present, you then document the timing of the contamination and the purchase history to see about liability issues, because liable parties are restricted from what they can do compared to parties that are not liable. So it's a very important thing to figure out at the beginning. Once that's all figured out, and you are looking to actually do something, any developer or owner has to be concerned about do-care activities, and what this means is, you have to come up with plans and documentation about how you're going to prevent exposure, so wherever the contamination is now in groundwater or soil, you want that to go somewhere else, surface water, fish and wildlife, people, et cetera. So you want to figure out a plan and document how you're going to prevent that exposure from happening, and how you're going to prevent the contamination from getting any worse. That's all required. Part of that figuring out also can lead to real action on the ground, that can be things like contaminated soil removal, barriers between groundwater plumes and surface waters, for instance, or between contaminated soils and areas that are going to be used by people, and other kinds of controls. All this action can also lead to additional response activities or cleanup activities, the thing you normally think about as a super fun kind of thing, those kinds of actions can also be required to protect human health and the environment. So that's environmental eligible activities. Now, let's talk quickly about the non-environmental eligible activities, so this is in addition to the sort of cleanup ideas. If it's an old site that has asbestos or lead, you can do abatement of lead and asbestos, that's an eligible activity on these properties. There can be actual demolition of structures that need to be torn down, that can be covered. In those places like Marquette, that are core community under the Brownfield law, so we are, and Marquette is one of those, one such place, you can also do things like this, site preparation. So site preparation itself can be included as a Brownfield eligible activity. And, again, in core communities, infrastructure, so, you know, roads, utilities, moving buildings for development purposes, economic development purposes, can all be done as part of a Brownfield activity. Now, if you have the properties, the eligible activities, and the Brownfield plan, how does the, what is the Brownfield actually doing to catalyze this sort of development? And so the way it works is, there's tax increment financing, and so what this is, is you start with, whenever a Brownfield plan becomes approved, that year, there is a base level of taxes, of property taxes, of taxable value on the property, and that is a real number, so that sets the baseline. And those taxes that have been coming into the city and other jurisdictions will continue to come in at that same rate during any Brownfield activity. So the taxes that have been coming in will continue to come in at that same rate. But then, when the Brownfield catalyzes this development on the property, it increases the property value, and from the investment that developers do, so the property taxes go up. The developer pays for these actions, which are eligible activities, which have prevented the development in the past. The developer then, once the property value goes up after he takes those actions, there's increased taxes that are paid by the developer or owners, and those tax payments are captured by the Brownfield Authority and used to pay for those Brownfield eligible activities that I just went over. So if it fit under the plan, it's one of those activities, it's one of these sites, those increased tax payments above the base are going to pay off those activities. Then, for five more years after all of those activities are paid off, the Brownfield Authority continues to collect those increased taxes to go into the local Brownfield fund, which is a revolving fund, which can be used to further catalyze some of these same public ideas that I talked about at the beginning, to catalyze actions which would not otherwise occur without the revolving fund. Then, after those five years, the increased payment plus the base goes to the city and the other taxing jurisdictions. Here is a chart which shows you what that looks like, if you look very quickly, this is just a chart which shows time on the x-axis, so 2018 out into the future, and it shows taxes collected on the y-axis, up to $0 to $75,000, and this is what's happening over time. The orange at the bottom is that baseline that I talked about at the beginning, so in this case, 2018, the plan gets approved, the amount of taxable value at that time is cordoned off for the entire time, and continues to come in as it did before. The blue on the left is the increased property value and increased taxes that come in because of the investment developers make, and that is captured, in this case, it's a hypothetical example, for 11 years, captured to pay off those Brownfield eligible activities. Then the magenta, I think that's what color that is, for five years, this is in the revolving fund, and then the green shows increased taxes that go into the jurisdictions, taxing jurisdictions thereafter. So the idea is, in theory, none of the blue, magenta, or green would have happened were not for the fact that you convinced developers to do the development because they're now able to tackle these extraordinary expenses, and you get the green, that you wouldn't otherwise have gotten, but you do have to wait until the blue and the magenta is done. So that's how the TIF works. So I'm going to quickly now transition, that was the second part, the third part's going to be what we've actually been doing here in Marquette, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. Here's who we have on the board right now, we have one vacancy, we have an ex officio treasurer, Mary Schlett, and we have our city assistant city manager, Sean, as our liaison. Oh, before I go to the project, this is a very important point. The financial obligations are all dictated by development agreements, and you set out the terms and conditions for tax capture and reimbursement, so this is between city, Brownfield Authority, developers, et cetera. Sometimes it gets fairly complicated, that's all done upfront ahead of time. Two important points about that, in all cases, the Brownfield Authority's obligations are only up to what is actually captured by taxes, so until the taxes actually come in and are captured, there's no getting beyond that, there's no obligation beyond the taxes that actually come in. And second, I think this is important for the city, in most cases, the bond issue payments take the top priority for the captured taxes, so in other words, those bond issue payments get paid first, and then some of the developer obligations next. There can be, you know, complicated modifications of that, but that is generally the case. Okay, here are the projects that I want to go through, this is the third part of the presentation, again, I'll try to go through this quickly. This is Founder's Landing, what it looked like before, so we're looking, you know, the downtown area, south of the Ordock, east of downtown, this is sort of what it looked like back at the end of the sort of industrial era, if you will. What's happened since then, under Brownfield plans, is a series of developments, first looking at parcel one and parcel three A, these are 42 condominiums and an 84-room hotel, the Hampton Inn, which is a $21 million investment, and resulted in 39 full-time jobs. In addition, at Founder's Landing is the large building that I'm sure you've all seen, One Market Place. You can see on the figure on the left, in sort of the, in that figure, the upper-left side is One Market Place, where it is in the map, the diagram. The figure on the lower right shows you what the building actually looks like. This has got underground parking, 68 apartments, almost a $21.2 million investment. Also, at Founder's Landing, we have two and three Market Places. Two Market Places will begin in 2020, and then three Market Places and one Market Place Extension. So where these are, if you look on the figure on the left, the extension to one Market Place is, on the figure on the left, is to the right on the upper side, two is on the lower right, and three is on the lower left. If you look at the figure on the right, you're now looking from the lake, one Market Place is the large building on the right, the extension is towards you, towards the lake, two is just to the left, sorry, three is just to the left, and two is behind that, further away from the lake. And that's what the whole complex will look like when it's finished, there'll be these three buildings with parking in between, and you can see the Hampton Inn just to the left on that figure on the right. In addition, the Founder's Landing Brownfield Plan captures taxes which are paying for, providing revenue for the pier redevelopment, which includes 45% from state tax capture, and here you see what the pier looks like before on the left, and after conceptual drawing on the right. Now, moving to another project, this is Liberty Way, so now we're on Washington Street at the Old Bread Factory. This is what the site looked like before, and here's after. You've got UPHP Building on the left, upper left, you've got the M Bank Building on the right, and then down below, you can see what the whole complex looks like. Here we have an estimated $11 million in property taxes over 30 years, and the creation of 213 jobs. Next project is the Nestle Down Bed and Breakfast, and so this is before and after. So now we're on Lakeshore Boulevard, near Picnic Rocks, this is the Old Lakeshore Foundry. This is a $1 million investment, opened in 2015. All the Brownfield activities have already been paid off at this one, and $25,000 has already gone into the local revolving fund, including $5,000 from state capture. And finally, this is the largest project that we've undertaken, this is the Duke Life Point Hospital replacement. This is what the site with the new hospital is now, what it looked like before. And before I show you after, just some quick figures. $330 million facility opens on June 2nd, 2019, it's a 32nd, 37-acre medical campus, 525,000 square foot hospital, 315 beds, it's also a 90,000 square foot office building. And then the TIF in this case also pays bonds for the new municipal service center over on Wright Street, and the US 41 Roundabout. And so this is what that looks like, if you look on the upper left here, here's the municipal service center over on Wright Street, new building, that being moved came from TIF payments. Down below, you see the roundabouts next to the hospital on 41. And on the right, you see the hospitals in the foreground, the office buildings, just behind it. This was a very large project, about $37 million were covered in Brownfield eligible activities, everything from environmental services to public infrastructure and the location of that building. Location of the building was the largest single item at 18 million. The most important thing, though, is the original plan estimated that the investment would be about $170 million. And with a $170 million investment, the plan estimated it would take 25 years to pay off the Brownfield eligible activities with the TIF, which would take us through 2041 from when it started. The actual investment ended up being more like $30 million, so there's a much higher TIF. So we're now estimating that the reimbursement will only take 12 years, which will take us through 2028. So it's very good news that we're going to get to that place where the money comes flowing back into the city and other jurisdictions much more quickly than originally planned. A quick note, this is another complication that affects some of the other authorities and US commissioners, there are other authorities that use TIFs, so the local development finance authority that you established in 2014, the downtown development authority that you established in 1976, both have their own kinds of TIFs. And the LDFA can affect properties in many places throughout the city, the DDA affects, you know, properties in that DDA downtown district. And what that means is, if somebody wants to use the Brownfield TIFs to get over these humps for these Brownfield authorities, we have to enter into interlocal agreements between the LDFA, DDA, and MBRA, to allow the Brownfield to capture, so that we can pay off those extraordinary costs to allow the development to occur. We've already done this, the first project where we did this was the 231 West Patisserie, which is the bakery on Washington Street near downtown. And so we think this will happen again, and it's been very smooth so far, but it's an important thing to keep in mind. We have several quick just accomplishments that I've already alluded to, but specifically in this 2019-2020 year, we got the parking facility financing in place, did a budget amendment for the Fairfield Inn and the Town Homes, which are, that's in Founder's Landing, closer to the Old Beef Roop, and the Fairfield Inn state work plan, the Brownfield work plan under the state law was approved. The 231 West Patisserie, again, on Washington, near downtown, that work plan under the state law was approved. And we made a presentation on Founder's Landing site that I showed you at the statewide Brownfield Conference, and that was very well received. In 2021, we're expecting that there'll be continuing work on two Market Places and the parking facility that you saw earlier, the three Market Places, an additional building, Fairfield Inn, which is close to the Beef Roop, and the Town Homes in that direction. We'll start seeing work on the Upper Peninsula State Bank, which is the old Burger King that's on Washington, a little bit further out from downtown. We'll start to see work on Customs House, which is the building just north of Founder's Landing, which will sort of complete that whole development of Founder's Landing towards the downtown. We'll see continuation of the Beacon House, which is on the new hospital site property, just north of Seventh Street, or sorry, just some direction from Seventh Street, whichever way that is, towards the hospital from Seventh Street. And then we're expecting to do quite a bit of community outreach, and that's my segue to these key considerations and issues I just want to spend a little bit of time talking to you about. I think that the City Commission and the Brownfield Authority both face some important issues in the coming year, and probably coming years, that have already come up to some degree in public comments, and in concerns that have been expressed. The first is, there's a concern about the amount of developmental, development pressure near the lakeshore, what kind of development, and how much, and how quickly, and as you can see, some of these Brownfield projects are near lakeshore, so this gets into that conversation very quickly, I think that'll continue, I think that'll continue this year. And so that's something to keep front and center, we should keep in mind, how to engage the public about what is happening, what could happen in the future. Another big issue is, sometimes the developments tend to be high-end housing, some of the things which have already been done have been high-end housing, and there's a lot of interest in doing more workforce housing at lower income levels. This is something which we are already contemplating in the Brownfield Authority as one of the proper uses of our revolving fund, and we've set some- proper uses of our revolving fund, and we've set some policies in place to make that one of our, one of the criteria that we look at. But this will be another thing that, which I think we all need to continue to grapple with in the coming years, starting probably this coming year. Another big issue is we know there's, there's already developer interested in using Brownfields at the Old Cliffs Dow site near the lakeshore, you know, sort of between downtown and Prescott Isle. That's going to bring up a lot of issues about the timing of development. There's still monitoring going on of how much contamination there and what are the levels trending over time, what kind of development is appropriate, what kinds of additional actions we need to take place for various kinds of development. I think that'll be a big issue. And then finally, again, remembering that there's this juxtaposition between market forces and, you know, government, city goals. What is going to be the prioritization by either the city or developers or the Brownfield Authority for different opportunities where Brownfield might be used? The power plant sites, the old hospital site, the Cliffs Dow site, other sites that we may not have thought of? How should those be prioritized? How much effort should we put steering one direction or another? And so I think this will continue to be a big issue this year and in the coming years. And those are my comments. Can I, do I stop sharing?
Sure, you can stop sharing, just so maybe we can see your video. Thank you, David. Nice presentation. You did a nice job going through it quickly. There's a lot to cover there, and we touch on these projects a lot with the budget and periodically through the year, but it was nice to kind of get a comprehensive update. So thank you. Your last question about prioritization, I think, is one that we will need to address as a commission in the coming weeks and months. And I know at some point we've been talking about maybe looking at economic development again, so I'm going to ping that back to the city manager's radar for a future time. And any other questions or comments for David Allen on the Brownfield Authority? And let's go ahead and try to keep them real brief, because we have got a whole meeting to get through still. Commissioner Frazier.
Thanks, David, for your awesome presentation. I agree with you, the hospitals are probably giving an exciting look at for Brownfield. You know, who knows what's going to happen with that. I agree the power plant downtown Marquette, BLP thing, that's going to be a tricky one to think. But I agree, probably in the next five years, the old, the old we, as you said, could be a big one to deal with. I think that I like a lot of people are questioning is why are like the old Marquette Mall considered a Brownfield? They ripped it, they're down the old Riverside, they're building a bank there now, and then, you know, the old Burger King, they're doing a pretty good, like, pretty good old building in the river down, bringing it Brownfield. I think that's a lot of people are questioning, is how is that considered a Brownfield just because it's an old restaurant, you know? That's telling you, it'll be vacant for like a year or two, but still, it's just something to talk about and agree. You know, the big sites like, you know, of course Founder's Landing, Bunny Bread, sites are unbelievable and did a great job with that, but just think little things like that, like the, the old Riverside Mall and the, the old Pizza Hut, it's just, or, sorry, the Burger King is something to think about, that's all.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mr. Allen, thank you very much for the very comprehensive presentation. It was certainly much appreciated and a lot of good information there. Last meeting, I made a real point when we were discussing and approving, I think, the Brownfield for the new bank project, was the concept of why we are losing money from the Peter White Public Library every time we do a Brownfield. And of course, that's coming out of the TIF, and I understand that the law allows that to happen, or stipulates it does happen. But I've got to believe that with all the folks we've got on the Brownfield Committee and all the initiative and all the imagination, they can figure out a way that we can make one of the jewels of Marquette whole and not an ad hoc bank for Brownfield projects. Now, I understand that if we would put this on a balance project versus the library, the project's going to win for the greater good, very certainly. But we have to have a way of making the library whole, perhaps by declaring it to be part of the public benefit of the project and then reimbursing whatever expenses are coming through, might be a concept. But I would hope that the Brownfield Committee would in the out months begin to look at this as an issue and determine a way that we can fix it, so that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot every time we approve a good, viable, useful Brownfield project. But thank you again for the wonderful presentation.
And if you'd like, I have just two quick things I would be willing to say about that, if you would.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
So first, I think that in most cases, nearly all cases, the actual financing to the library goes up, not down, because of that, remember that baseline? So you have that baseline level of taxes, which has never decreased. When a Brownfield starts, the property value that would have been there, absent development, continues to come in and is not captured by the Brownfield. And then, after a certain amount of time, much, much more money starts to come in, including to the library, than would have otherwise. So I agree that from the library's perspective, it might have been even more advantageous to have all the additional come in even sooner, but in fact, we're not shooting a hole in the budget of the library in almost all cases. Second, even despite that, we have in fact been talking as a committee about looking for some innovative ways to find some way to use our revolving fund in some capacity that is appropriate under the Brownfield law and that would be beneficial to the library in some way. And we haven't figured out exactly what that means in detail, but we're quite interested in figuring out, just as you suggest, and I think we'll be talking a lot more about that with you amongst ourselves and with the library.
Well, I thank you very much for that thought line. What I do have is a document from MAC that stipulates that the per-year capture for the library is about $2,200, ending out at the end of the Brownfield for the bank at about $2,400. So that seems to me to be money transferred from one pot to another pot. Obviously, you're on the Brownfield and are far more knowledgeable to this than I am, but I do appreciate that you're looking at ways of trying to make that not a problem. Thank you very much.
Great.
Any other brief comments from commissioners? Number, Tom Hill?
Yeah, thank you for that very comprehensive. And I think it's a question, I want to highlight the question at the end, again, also about the prioritization, and that we don't have to wait for the developer to tell us what to do in our community. We can set goals and objectives as a commission. We can say how we want a new development. We have influence. We do not have final say, but we absolutely can influence what kind of development we want to have in our community. And as a place that is in some ways booming, housing prices are going up, 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 up. We have, our tourism, even with COVID, has gone up. People want to be here, and yet at the same time, retail is imploding, and we have, you know, acres and acres of empty retail space. And so I do think that's a very important conversation that we need to address sooner rather than later.
Any final comments from the commission? Well, David, we certainly appreciate you joining us, and you did a nice job on the presentation tonight. We look forward to hearing from you again soon, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving up on the agenda, we've got the consent agenda, number three. This will require a roll call vote due to item number 3H to schedule a public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzel, anything to discuss? Consent? Commissioner Stonehouse?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? The ringed non-city clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to new business, item number four, Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant. City clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, the city clerk's office was notified that the city had received an elections administration grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life, the CTCL. The grant, which is aimed at promoting safe and reliable voting during the COVID-19 pandemic, totals $15,899.25 and can be used for election worker training, polling location costs, equipment costs, and costs associated with nonpartisan voter education and with the purchase of personal protective equipment. The CTCL is a national nonprofit focused on the modernization of U.S. elections. This includes a goal of making elections more professional, inclusive, and secure by educating voters and supporting local election administration. Though this grant opportunity is national, it was shared with Michigan clerks by the Michigan Bureau of Elections. The city will use these funds for signage and training materials, as well as costs related to the city clerk's satellite office on the NMU campus and costs related to increases in absentee balloting. Fiscal effect, the grant funds can be used to offset related costs incurred between June 15th and December 31st, 2020. Recommendation, approve the grant agreement with the Center for Tech and Civic Life and direct the city manager or his designee to sign the agreement. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we approve the grant agreement with the Center for Tech and Civic Life and direct the city manager or his designee to sign the agreement.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
Just thank you to the city clerk for staying on top of the available funding and pursuing the funding, and that will help us with the expenses related to this very unusual and tenuous election cycle. And I have a lot of confidence in our city to have the efficient and accurate results that we need.
Commissioner Frazier, anything to add?
City, you did a good job, as usual.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Item number five, budget adjustment fiscal year end 2020. City clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you. According to state and local laws and regulations, the city should complete each fiscal year with a budget in which actual expenditure amounts do not exceed budgeted amounts. The attached schedules show the activities for which the city budgeted for fiscal year 2020. Fiscal effect, approval of the adjustments will help ensure the city stays in compliance with budget rules and regulations. Recommendation, approve the budget adjustments for fiscal year 2020 and authorize the chief financial officer to make the adjustments necessary to balance the budget. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to approve the budget adjustments for fiscal year 2020 and authorize the chief financial officer to make the adjustments necessary to balance the budget.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel, any discussion?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Bonzel, anyone else? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Item number six, city attorney evaluation. City clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city attorney. In August, the city commission directed the mayor to appoint three commissioners to an evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee consisted of Mayor Smith, Commissioner Schlegel, and Commissioner Stonehouse. The overall evaluation was very positive. The city attorney has successfully met all city charter requirements for his position. No increase in compensation was considered, because the attorney is paid on a retainer basis, and the amount of his compensation for legal services is approved as part of the annual budget process. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'll make the motion to approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Schlegel, discussion?
I'd just applaud the work that we've gotten from our city attorney and appreciate continued support.
Commissioner Frazier?
Roger, great guy, keeping the city out of trouble.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to add that working with city attorney Ron Keefe the last few years, he's done nothing but an excellent job for the city, certainly appreciate his work, and it was an easy evaluation to do, so thank you, Ron. All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Number seven, city manager evaluation. City clerk, could you please read the background?
The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city manager. In August, the city commission directed the mayor to appoint three commissioners to an evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee consisted of Mayor Smith, Commissioner Schlegel, and Commissioner Stonehouse. The subcommittee met to review the city manager's performance and compensation. The overall evaluation was very positive. The manager has successfully met all city charter requirements for his position, and the majority of the city commissioners awarded him the highest rating in all other performance categories. The subcommittee recommends no salary increase at this time because of budgetary constraints imposed on the city by the current economy. However, the subcommittee recommends a potential wage re opener in early December or when the state budget is set. Fiscal effect, the city manager's salary of $124,480 per year is included in the fiscal year 21 budget. Recommendation, approve the evaluation subcommittee's recommendation to continue the city manager's contract with a salary of $124,480 per year and direct the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the current contract with an effective date of October 1, 2020, for the commission's review and approval at its next regular meeting. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the evaluation subcommittee's recommendation to continue the city manager's contract with a salary of $124,480 per year and direct the city attorney to prepare amendment to the current contract with effective date of October 1, 2020, for the commission's review and approval of the next meeting.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, discussion?
Mike's doing a great job. He's willing to share his paycheck with the commission.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
I can't find words that would, I think, adequately describe the wonderful job that Mr. Angelique has done for the city and this commission. He has been extraordinary in a time of extraordinary stress and extraordinary events, and he continues to be so as we continue to move through, COVID-19 obviously comes to mind, but being the city manager of a city like Marquette is just extraordinarily difficult. And he does it with grace, he does it with style, he does it with humor, and I just cannot really say how well he's done. Thank you for the opportunity.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, I'd just, I'd be remiss if I did not chime in, especially with COVID, how everything has gone this year, working with the city commission as a whole, keeping us overly informed as much as possible. You know, to say it was perfect, I wouldn't go that far, Mike, but you're doing a hell of a job. Thank you for everything that you've done, and keep up the good work. But, you know, it's a real credit to staff and to the city manager for how, how we've dealt with such an amazing event such as COVID, and I just wanted to express my gratitude.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I also want to echo the same comments that have been made on the previous item about our city attorney, as well as this item about the city manager. I think they're both doing a good job. And I also want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and also my colleagues, Commissioner Schlegel and Commissioner Stonehouse, for your work on the evaluation subcommittee and for the opportunity to provide some input. So, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Well, I'd just like to add that, you know, working with Mike the last few years, he's done an incredible job. I have a few of the notes from the eval, some of the highlights. Top of the list was managing Marquette in a pandemic, still ongoing, and it's an incredible task, and he's doing an excellent job getting the recreational marijuana ordinance through, which I think we've kind of forgotten about now, at least in the task of doing business, because it's not something that comes up irregularly, but there was a time when that was a difficult item to be working through. Continued sale of city property for development and all of the nuance there, and continued work on Lake Shore Boulevard stabilization and the Lake Shore Boulevard project, including a work session that we had back in January, and keep looking at that, and now he's having a balanced budget, which he does in conjunction with his staff. So, thank you, Mike, and we certainly appreciate the work you do, and we're glad to have you. All right, so all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, so at this point, we will be moving into a closed session, oh, no, no, tax tribunal, we added one. Sorry about that. Okay, so item number eight, this is the Marquette Town This is the Marquette Township Tax Tribunal Letter and Resolution. This will require a roll call vote. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Davis?
You want to do the background?
Oh, yeah, thank you. City clerk, could you please read the background? This is one that was, we added just today, so.
Thank you, mayor. Governor Whitmer has reappointed Victoria Enyard to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. Prior to her retirement, Victoria Enyard was a key factor in many tax tribunal appeals which favored the big box stores and was instrumental in allowing dark store evaluations to persist in Michigan. It is estimated that municipalities in Marquette County have lost approximately $2.8 million in tax revenue since 2009 due to these decisions. Municipalities in Marquette County have stated their opposition to this appointment by signing on to a letter written by Lynn Durant, Marquette Charter Township Supervisor, and by passing a resolution officially opposing this nomination. The city of Marquette was asked to join in opposing this appointment by signing on to this letter and passing a resolution. Fiscal effect: None. Recommendation: Approve the resolution opposing the appointment of Victoria Enyard to the Michigan Tax Tribunal and authorize the Marquette City Commission to sign the resolution and the Marquette Charter Township Letter to this effect. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel, for the reminder on the background. All right. So commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Davis?
Yes. I move to approve the resolution opposing the appointment of Victoria Enyard to the Michigan Tax Tribunal with a slight variation. I would like to, on page two, paragraph two, I would like to strike the language, quote, "is not competent to render decisions on Michigan law," unquote. And then further authorize the city commission to sign the resolution and the Marquette Charter Township Letter to this effect.
Thank you. I'm just making a note here, and after I do that, do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll gladly second that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Davis, discussion?
Only that I'm happy that we are taking a look at this resolution. I'm happy to support it and joining the other municipalities in Marquette County to oppose this appointment.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just, I think that it's very important that we're passing this resolution. I was pleasantly surprised to see it on our desks here, and something that we're adding to the agenda tonight. Certainly disappointed to see Victoria Enyard being reappointed to the Tax Tribunal given her critical role in formulating the dark store tax loophole, which has cost millions and millions of dollars to municipalities all across the state. I was also disappointed to see the State Senate Committee on Advice and Consent move forward with recommending her reappointment, so hopefully this will make some difference in Lansing.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I just find it interesting that she was originally appointed by Governor Schneider and has been a Republican, and has been reappointed by, you know, Governor Whitmer, a Democrat. That's a little odd. Typically, you tend to follow party lines on that, but I certainly support this 100%.
You are not the first person that I've heard that observation from Commissioner Stonehouse.
I can comment on that. There are commissions where it's de facto, if not in fact, the rule that there be a balance of Republicans and Democrats on that commission. It's the same with the Michigan Public Service Commission, which is also only three people, strives to maintain a balance of Republican, Democrat, and Independent, so that's not actually completely out of character. More out of character is choosing someone who is so, has made so many decisions that doesn't, that severely negatively impacts local governments and is a great concern.
Good point, Mayor Protem. Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Oh, Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, sorry, just real quick. I just want to applaud Supervisor Durant for putting this together and spearheading the letter, the other communities for supporting it, and I sure hope that this is spoken from the mountaintops and hope that it reaches below the bridge and to other communities that need to jump on board here and support this. Thank you.
Agreed. I echo my colleague's comments. All right. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
It's a roll call, mayor.
Oh, sorry about that. City clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote, although I think we know the outcome.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Just to remind the commissioners to sign before they leave tonight, please.
I was just about to do that. Stole my thunder.
Thank you.
So I'm going to actually hand this out so that we don't forget. There are two places that I need everyone to sign before you leave tonight. Commissioner Bonzel, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is actually a point that was raised earlier by Commissioner Davis, but should we be signing the copy that we have available to us right now, given that it has not been edited to reflect the small?
I had our wonderful Assistant City Manager Sean Havens create a signature page, and on this copy, I have redacted the language, so we will just keep this all together, and the adjustment has been made.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so that will be going on. We also will be moving, I believe, into a closed session. So we are on item number nine. Now, it read item eight before we added this previous item, but this will be item number nine, and I'll just read what the item is. Pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268H, to consider a written legal opinion by the city attorney regarding a civil action entitled "Alltel Corporation Doing Business As Verizon Wireless" versus the city of Marquette pending in the United States District Court for the Western District of Michigan Northern Division. So commissioners, do we have a motion to move into closed session on this item? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd make the motion as stated. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
Your honor, this is Ron Keefe. We need a roll call.
We need a roll call to move into closed session?
Yeah, we need a two-thirds roll call vote to go into two-thirds majority.
Thank you, city attorney. City clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, we are now...
I saw that. Thank you, City Clerk. And when we return into open session, I will ask the Commission if we have a motion on this item, and then this item will be wrapped up. Okay, we are back live in open session. Thank you to the public for hanging in there. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item number nine that we just went into a closed session for? Commissioner Schlegel?
I would move that the Commission direct the city attorney and city manager to negotiate a resolution of the Altel lawsuit and authorize the city manager to execute documents necessary to conclude the litigation.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Schlegel, any discussion?
None at this time.
Commissioner Frazier?
Get it on.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Mayor, may I abstain?
Uh, city attorney, may Commissioner Bonzel abstain from the vote?
No, Your Honor, unless he has a financial interest in Verizon.
I do not. I'll vote yes in that case.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that. So to clarify, motion passes seven zero. I'm sorry, I didn't hear a no, so I had made that assumption incorrectly, but we are at a seven zero at this point. Okay, so moving on to public comment. Do we have any written or phoned-in public comment for the second session this evening?
We have none.
Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Brings us two comments from the Commission. Up first, we have Commissioner Davis.
Okay, I just would encourage voters to become engaged and informed about the November election and know that the absentee ballots can be dropped off at the drop boxes here at City Hall and at the service center, and also that there will be a satellite office at Northern that will open October 5th. I want to also remind people that this Wednesday, there's a candidate forum for the city commission starting at 6:30. And I want to thank the Public Arts Commission for the bike path art. I think there's a lot of us in the city that are enjoying it, and it's nice to see their first project be so well received. And finally, I'm very pleased that the city was able to squeeze the budget a little so that some of the roads in Shyras Hills had some attention and were fixed. Thank you. That's it.
Great. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I think we accomplished really quite a lot tonight, Your Honor. You know, particularly getting finally the recycle program off and running. I think the public is going to like that and enjoy it. It's a great step forward for the city of Marquette. And the member election's coming up. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Well, we had a little bit of summer come back for a few days, as we know. U.P. is all about mixed weather. We've had all four, we've had all four in one month before. So wasn't surprised to see fall come, then winter, then summer come back and it falls back in. So we'll see how the rest of the year goes. And you don't pay, there's a lot of voting stuff out there all over the line on TV and stuff like that. So go vote.
Mayor Proton Hill?
Thank you. Yeah, I am happy to do my part to help communicate the Recycle 906 message. Really appreciated the time and effort that people have put in. And that's what I think I'm, I'm going to echo the comments on the voting, of course. And one other resource on voting, in addition, there's the candidate forum, which is a very important ordeal on our side. And an important event, I really do encourage folks to watch. You really are put on the spot and have to think on your feet. And it's a good event. And also, the Legal Women Voters publishes a questionnaire, answers at vote411.org.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my colleagues have already said most of it, but I will also just echo the sentiments about making sure you get out and vote. If you feel that you want to vote absentee, I would try to do so sooner rather than later. We have drop boxes available here at City Hall. There will be a satellite City Clerk office being set up next month on an Amuse Campus. And of course, remember to please turn over your ballot to look at the nonpartisan section. That's how all of us got here. I think that anybody that watches any of our meetings, especially the last few weeks, would certainly agree that the people who sit in this commission really make a difference. And your vote in the nonpartisan section really does matter. This year, you have a good field of candidates to choose from. You have three votes for city commission. There's also an election for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. So please do use those opportunities to help decide how our community moves forward into the future.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, you guys did a great job of wrapping things up tonight. A couple small things that I want to, well, I shouldn't say small because it's very important. The Lake Superior Watershed Partnership did a beach cleanup and beach grass planting in the last couple of weeks. We had a beautiful day for that. It was a great opportunity to get out and clean up the beaches. And I realize that there's a number of groups that are really kind of jumping on that bandwagon, and I can't thank you all enough for the time that you're putting into cleaning up after our neighbors who might not be as diligent as we are. So thank you so much for that. I'd also like to thank the group of, after a little bit of prodding after the football game the other night up on the hill, watching the Marquette game, a little bit of prodding. The kids went crazy and cleaned up the hill with all the trash. You know, that's not the school's property, at least not all of it is. I think some of it belongs to the Tourville, and I want to thank the Tourville ownership for allowing us to sit up and watch the game so we can safely social distance and be a part of the sporting event that's going on. So that's very nice of them to allow us to use that space. Thank you. And to respectfully clean up after we're done is something that I want to make sure, if your kids aren't watching this tonight, make sure that you remind them that that's private property and that they need to be a part of the answer and not the problem up there. So I want to thank all those people that took the time to clean up after the last couple of football games. Other than that, you guys did a great job on bringing up the other items. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks. I think my cohort here covered things pretty well. The one thing I wanted to add is that most of us are attending the Michigan Municipal League Virtual Convention this week. Was slated to be in Mackinac Island, but you know, unfortunately, we're going to be watching from our Chromebooks and iPads and participating as we can. This is a really nice chance for leaders from across the state to connect, learn from each other, hear from a wide array of presenters. And some of the topics that will be covered are an update from the governor, update from the Secretary of State, conversations around racial justice, lake shore scenario planning, state and federal legislative updates, and of course, COVID-19. So all of those are pretty hot topics. And I know we'll be talking about them, but I think we'll be learning a lot and able to bring that back to our future conversations. That brings us to comments from the city manager this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very quickly, the, we will work on getting a glass plan in place as quickly as we can, leaning towards the first week of every month, first full week of every month for the collection. I think that's the consensus I've heard from the Commission tonight, and that's what we'll work towards. Along those same lines, it's a little early, but brush collection is coming up. That will be the last week in October with compost. The following two weeks, schedules are being sent out in the bills now, so people will be aware. And that will remind us, or you, as we get closer to that. To answer one of the questions from one of the commenters or one of the writers in the campaign signs, where are they legally located? Well, under city ordinance, they have to be on private property. I think as we all know, they just kind of show up just about everywhere. We do try diligently to remove them from areas where they're not supposed to be. Right now, our enforcement person, we do not have one, but if staff sees one in a city right of way or someplace where they're not supposed to be, we generally grab it. And I'll tell you a dirty little secret. If you lose a sign, just look behind the dumpster outside the police department. That's where we stack them all up. So they make, I mean, they make nice targets for practicing shooting and stuff so you can put stuff on them. But, and then lastly, with regard to trick-or-treating, county managers are meeting weekly to discuss many things, but mainly we focus on the COVID situation. But we are taking an approach as a community, as a county, to trick-or-treating and going to be working on a policy plan process that I think all of us are going to follow. In order to not create a situation, for example, if Marquette doesn't have trick-or-treating and Nagani does, everybody goes to Nagani. So we're trying to come out on a unified front as to how we're going to deal with that, and hopefully I'll have that within the next two weeks. So that's all I, oh, and lastly, thank you very much for your kind comments and your reviews of me this past year, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
We are adjourned at 8:28 p.m. Thanks, everyone.